Scott.
Bob Van Heren.
Here.
Jennifer Baker. Philip Frame. Jim Bodenhammer.
Here.
Cory Manuel.
Here.
Susan Stockton. Wayne Allman.
Here.
Nick Reed.
Yeah.
All right, first item of business, you guys have minutes from August 7th for your approval.
Make a motion, we adopt the minutes.
Second.
Jennifer Baker.
Yes.
Wayne Allman.
Yes.
Jim Bodenhammer.
Yes.
Bob Van Heren.
Yes.
Cory Manuel.
Yes.
Nick Reed.
All right, you've got some committee reports in your packages. Don't have all of directors, but a few if you've got any question. With none, the first item of business, new business tonight is a resolution you have in front of you confirming an appointment on the Mountain Home AMP Commission to fill a vacancy created by Russell Tucker, resignation moving outside the city. The AMP has met today and they have a name of Matt Looney to present to the council for your approval to take over the spot that Russell was sitting in on AMP. Matt works for Basscap or Crickcraft, Yarcraft, whatever they call it out there. And we all know what is Basscap. And he's been here, I think, three, four years, something like that, Bob. And so.
Just to clarify, they.
They appointed him and we are.
Approving the.
Approving the appointment, actually, yeah.
Yeah.
Make a motion, we accept the resolution.
Second.
Jim Bodenhammer.
Yes.
Nick Reed.
Yes.
Jennifer Baker.
Yes.
Wayne Allman.
Yes.
Bob Van Heren.
Yes.
Cory Manuel.
Yes.
That will start at the September meeting when AMP next makes. All right, Roger, the first item, please.
Where's the best interest of the residents of the city of Mountain Home, the city council, I think, put in development of the city. Whereas city council adopted a unified zoning ordinance through ordinance number 9821, adopted on August 2098, amended several times since then, including through ordinance 720, which was adopted July, I'm assuming that's 19th or 11th and not 119. 2007, and through ordinance number 2213, or 202213, which was adopted on March 3, 2022. Whereas construction industry has made great advancements in the area for what is available for metal siding. Whereas zoning ordinance is in need of amendment to better reflect said advances and future development and growth of the city. Therefore, being ordained by the city council, section one language to be replaced. The entries under facade and landscaping requirements and type of facades under articles 32, 33, 34, 35, and 36 of the zoning ordinance are deleted and replaced with the following. All commercially zoned buildings shall be reviewed and approved by planning and engineering department and/or planning commission for compliance with building landscaping and facade requirements before a building permit can be issued. See development regulations for landscaping requirements. Copy of the plans and letter of intent shall be submitted to the board secretary of the planning commission at least 15 working days prior to the scheduled meeting of the commission at which consideration is requested by planning and engineering department. Facade requirements, all commercially zoned buildings must maintain a facade covering 100% of the entryway side, front side as visible from the street or not. Also, any side and rear walls which are 50% visible from the street shall have the same facade covering as the front entry. Tights of facade, exterior facade material can include stone, cultured stone, brick, veneer, glass, architectural precast panels or detailing, stucco, derivative, wood, concrete siding, decorative concrete block or metal siding. If vinyl siding, concrete blocks, painted or natural or metal siding are desired, it shall be reviewed and approved or denied by planning and engineering department with appeals and further review to be conducted before the planning commission. For any exterior facade material to be considered, planning engineering department will need the manufacturer name, profile name, and sample to be submitted. If the planning engineering department determines that a proposed facade does not blend with other facades around the area of construction, the approval of planning commission will be required. Section two, should any provision of this ordinance be found to conflict with any part of an ordinance previously adopted, terms of this ordinance shall be found to hold precedence over the previous adopted material. Ordinance number 202213 is repealed in its entirety upon adoption of this ordinance. And last clause is the emergency clause.
Okay. Arnold and Clay have been working on this with some folks around town. They've been working with the planning commission, I think, about two or three meetings, a workshop or two to try to make some nice changes. You've got, this is on for the first reading tonight. If any of you have any questions about it, both Arnold and Clay are here and will be glad to try to answer any questions you might have.
So what's the main difference? I know there's something about visible fasteners or.
Here comes Mr. Clay String, we'll let him.
Good afternoon, Clay. Those of y'all that haven't met me, I'm Clay String, I'm a building official for the building inspection.
Hey Clay, hit the button, turn the microphone on up there, we're up to that.
How about now?
There we go.
Is that better? Okay. Thank you.
We had a technical difficulty.
All right. That's one of the things that the city clerk's supposed to be.
We're rolling now. So the question was, what's the main difference in what we're proposing versus what's already in effect? We have taken out the requirement for, there was a requirement that exposed fasteners on metal siding were not previously allowed. We've had several buildings here recently that have went in for variances with the planning commission and have received variances based on what the buildings actually look like. And those buildings did have exposed fasteners in their design. One of them, and I don't think, I think I can give it as an example, was Mountain Home Burger Company. Mountain Home Burger Company on the side of the building had exposed fasteners. They were the same color as the siding that was used. You couldn't tell, honestly, from the road that there was exposed fasteners. But if you got within five foot of it, there was exposed fasteners. Therefore, it was against, it was against current ordinances. I spoke with the general contractor and told him at that point that he needed to come in front of planning commission and get a variance, that way everything was done correctly. And we'd went through the right chain of command to do that. Of course, there was no problem with it, the building looks, looks good. And, and that worked out fine. But that's where this all sparked off of was, okay, what do we need to do to fix this? And to try to streamline, if you will, the plan review side. Because currently, any building, any new construction, any renovation with a roof line addition or any interior renovation that exceeds 50% of the assessed value of the property, it triggers the facade and the landscape ordinance as well as the drainage ordinance. That being said, we want to try to streamline that and bring it in-house into the building inspection department to allow us to look at these and go, okay, the facade matches what's existing, what's surrounding it. We can go ahead and approve this. Obviously, there's, there's, if we've got a building coming in, and the example I use is, if we've got a building coming in that's yellow, for example, and it's surrounded by brick structures, we're obviously going to pass that on for more opinion from the planning commission. And that's how we wrote this ordinance up.
And what's been happening, they had to go to planning commission first, correct?
Yes, sir.
And created a lot of activity there that, to be honest with you, you know, they weren't near as involved with as Clay and Arnold or Justin or anyone else on that side to see it. So we're just trying to make it come here. If they don't like the answer that Arnold or Clay give them, then they can go to the planning commission, that's one of them out there.
Well, I know Lang had some concerns, so I'd kind of like.
Well, real quick, if, before we open it to the public.
Okay.
Your last statement, you said, if it was a yellow building.
Yes, sir.
And it wanted to be, or it was going to be around concrete or brick buildings, then there might be an issue there.
Yes, sir.
How can we tell somebody they can't have a yellow building? Like, if somebody buys this parking lot out here and their building's yellow, maybe it's the Canary Farm, I don't.
I understand.
But, I mean, how can you tell them that they couldn't build their yellow building out there?
Well, currently, the way it works is it actually goes in front of the planning commission for review regardless. And, and they, from what I understand, have the right to tell someone based on the facade that's presented that they cannot use that.
On the color of the facade or on the?
Material, the whole facade and everything about the facade is up for debate. That's why there's, from what I understand, that's why there's seven councilmen on that or commissioners on that. To make that determination. And that's why when we worded the, the basis of the ordinance, we put it in there to where there is an appeals process. So if it doesn't match, for example, let's use that. There's a yellow building, we say, it doesn't match the facade. We're most likely, I think I speak for Arnold on this, we're not going to just deny it. We're going to say, hey, we probably need to send this on to planning commission and let them make the call on it at that point.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm surprised that the planning commission can decide even the color of your building, though. That doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever.
I think you used an example, but it might be a little bit out there, you know.
Right.
I don't think we're going to get into color, but if it's, if it's a definite misfit, you know, in Clay's eyes or Arnold's, and, you know, how we determine that, you know, we don't know whether that's based on what it looks like.
Well, even if it's not colored, I've just, it, that's kind of where I'm, I've kind of got it hung up, hung up because with the modern architecture of today, I mean, if somebody buys property off the backside of the square, and I understand that the square's got its old retro look to it. But if somebody wants to build a building a block off the square and it's very modern looking, say it's metal and shine, though I understand it might not fit the motif of that area, how could we, how could we justify telling a business that they couldn't build their business? If it's in spec, if it's in architectural spec and engineering wise, how can we not? How can we keep them from doing that?
I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
I see, and, and maybe.
Not, not the type of business. I'm just saying the design of the business. Because I understand we have ordinances where certain businesses can't be operated in the city. But I'm just, I'm, I'm really wanting to open this up.
I understand where you're coming from. Maybe the, maybe the yellow, the color was a bad example, like Mayor was explaining.
Right.
I use that as just a, as an extreme example to try to come up with something.
And I'm not trying to put you under the pinch, I'm just, I'm just really wanting to see.
And that's regulated across the country in different ways and everything. There's some towns that where you have to go quite strictly to their architecture. You know, you can't go with a modern design, you gotta make it look like old German windmills or something like that.
Right.
There are cities that regulate down to that, through that ordinance, you know, they go on the pass and everything, that's, that's how that's.
That's not a change in this.
No, that's no change. That's, that's what's going on right now.
No, it's just being brought to light, that's all I'm saying.
And I hear one thing, it sounds like we're, we're trying to, to make sure this doesn't happen. But at the same time, this happened at, at Mountain Home Burger Company and then, and we just kind of let it go. And so now we're going to change the rules.
No, they had to get a variance. I mean, they, they had to go in front of planning commission to get a variance.
Are we going to open the floodgates or it, I feel like we're going the other direction, kind of with, with what I'm hearing.
If I can, I'd like to hit on that with Mountain Home Burger Company real fast. The, so with, it's, I use it as an example, it's one that I look at. And again, it doesn't matter what I say about it. It matters what, everybody's got their own opinion. But when I looked at it, it was a prime example of one that I went, wow, that's a really good looking building. There's, it looks outstanding, but it clearly states in the ordinance, no exposed fasteners. And we have exposed fasteners on it. And what happened was, it was a perfect storm, because when they called, they called me and they said, hey, we need you to come out here and look at this. They were trying to do their diligence at that point, because they got it hung. And then somebody new and called and said, hey, we need to look at this, make sure we're, we're okay here. Which is when I come out and said, no, we're not. You guys need to either take it down, do something different, or go in front of planning commission and ask for a variance.
Right.
Which, that is kind of what sparked this, is the timeline.
And so how will this stop that?
This will stop that because for about a month and a half, they had to pause construction. They, they were unable to finish their exterior facade at that point, because they didn't have an answer whether they could continue or they had to, you know, they had to take it all down and replace it with something because planning commission deemed it not fit.
So.
Go ahead.
Then, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just so we're stepping through this step by step. So then at that point, by this new version, they've, they could have come to city hall, you could have went out and reviewed it and said, and you could have given the variance on site versus them having to wait six weeks to go in front of planning commission?
That's possible. What most likely would have happened if we play that scenario out would be, before construction started, they would bring a sample of material in like it states in here. Or a rendering that showed this with exposed fasteners on it, and we went, yeah, it looks good, and we would have passed it. And it would have never had to even go to.
It wouldn't even went to planning commission.
I think we're going to be able to catch it a lot earlier, Nick, and, and with Clay and Arnold in the plan review process. Because we don't always see that now, because the first step was to come to the planning commission and once they approved that. Now, then they come into us, right? With a lot of their, their stuff. So we're, we're behind sometimes and the commissions already approved it. So we won't have a first say. And with the stuff that we're going to ask the developer, the builder to do on the front end, if, if there's, you can't always tell when it's on this piece of paper what it looks like.
You bet.
You know, and if you want to build this and there's a question about it, and Clay has one, all right, Nick, bring me a piece of that. Show me what you're talking about, get me a rendering or something of that, so I can have a little more information and make his decision based off that, other than a square box on a white piece of paper.
But then, okay, it goes in front of you and Arnold, you guys talk about it, you deny.
Correct.
And then they're like, well, this is what we want to stick with, we've seen it in other structures here, da, 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 da. Then they go to the planning commission, and then if the planning commission decides to supersede your decision.
It's in effect.
Then it's in effect.
That's no problem.
Okay.
Does it automatically go to the planning commission?
No, sir, if it's, if it's approved by us, it will not go to planning.
But if it's denied, then that's where the challenge would be addressed.
And that's just like the variances that have been going through on these exposed fasteners for a lot this year. Because they, materials have progressed and everything, a lot of these people are getting variances through the planning commission on exposed fasteners. By your ordinance and everything, it says no exposed fasteners. So yeah, we would have to deny that right now. And then, you know, it'd be up to the planning commission to grant a variance or not. But as, I believe we wrote it to pull out those exposed fasteners and everything.
We did, in fact, to try to clean that all up as far as. Well, and I worry about somebody that's not as, doesn't care about the, the image of the city maybe as much as you guys, that take over the helm at some point. And are we at that point, if, if a buddy wants a concrete block building in the middle of all these brick homes, is that going to be okay? And I, it's not, it's going to skip the planning commission at that point. I definitely see the advantage of, of helping this through, but I'm just concerned about.
Well, we've let, we've let, made the others do the buildings without fasteners. And now then, if we approve this, they can go in and build a building right next to them and have fasteners. And in my past experience, a fastener is the first thing that starts fading, turning colors versus deciding.
And this is all.
Then it starts standing out.
This is all coming from the planning commission. I mean, we're not, we're not dreaming this up or anything like that, we're just, we're getting it out of the planning commission, what their wishes are.
I will say, Wayne, if I could further on that, yes, you are correct. Previous years, and I know that's kind of why the order that started was to regulate exposed fasteners due to the agricultural look, I guess we could call it, you know. That was, 10 years ago, that was really your option, was exposed fasteners with one color of metal and had a real, could have a real agricultural look to it. With fasteners that they're coming out with today, different shapes, different profiles, different materials. I, I think you, I think you'll see a lot different result in that. I could be wrong, but I would say with the different in materials, you know, a lot of stainless steel stuff like that could be different.
But then that again would be a point that you guys would have to make a decision. If they were using a less quality fastener.
Absolutely.
Then you could say, okay, well, here's the deal. We've seen from this point here, 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 that these fasteners fade or fail or whatever. You're going to need to step up to the A-class fastener versus the B-class fastener. And then we can pass it, or you need to find something different, that kind of thing.
Absolutely.
And then if they wanted to challenge it at that point, then if they wanted to stick with the B-class fastener, then that challenge would go before the planning commission.
Correct.
It makes, makes more sense now hashing it versus just.
We're trying, I guess the goal would be to try to throw some real technical knowledge at it, as well as just looking at it other from side, take the looks completely out of it. But we're actually seeing what our materials are. They're bringing samples in or they're showing us renderings with model numbers, with manufacturing names to, to see that, what it is, how's it going to hold up? Because I'll use Commissioner Brown's words, he's concerned about the 50-year appearance. That's, I've heard that 100 times if I've heard it once, and it's good, because it's true. You think of it, don't think of it today, what it's going to look like today, when it's fresh and shiny and new. Think of it 50 years down the road, when it's had 50 years worth of sun and water beating down on it, how's it going to look? And so that's, that's what I would go into it with, is, is that, you know, in my head, come at it from that approach.
And how does this go, though, for like buildings now that, you know, they've got exposed fasteners or it's not up to par? How do, how do we, what are we going to do with those that are currently?
Nothing we can do, really, Bob.
If we change this, there isn't, but I mean, currently, the way the ordinance.
We can't do it anyway, you know.
Oh, okay.
We can't go backwards and say, well, your building's bad, you have to put a new siding on it.
If they decide to remodel it or something.
If they decide to remodel it, that's where it catches.
But that's what I'm curious about, like, I mean, the elephant in the room is on Highway 5 North.
That's not the only elephant.
Well, that's, that's the newest elephant, I guess, I should say. So I was just curious to, you know, how did that go as far as it did and still be the way it is?
They never, they never expanded, they never had to have a building permit.
So they just wrapped it and that's.
Oh, that one.
Okay. That's, that's a, really, if you look at it, that's a, that's a temporary wrap, too. I mean, that's, that's not a structural component.
Gone already.
Right, right. But I mean, that's, but that's the one that stands out the most to me. I mean, and there may be many others, but I just, I just didn't know, like, because that would currently be in violation of the ordinance, correct?
If they're building it, yes.
If they were building it, yes, but since it was already a pre-built building, then no.
They're just remodeling.
So you can add anything after the fact?
They can paint their buildings.
Yeah, but it's not paint.
Well, you can do whatever they.
Okay, all right, that's what I was, that's what I, that's what I'm trying to be clear about.
But the other elephant is a red building in this town that was built in 1998 or nine, Roger. A red metal barn that was built next to about a brand new, over $3 million brick and really nice attractive building on Colley Drive that was built in 1998. That's another elephant right there. So what Clay's trying to do would prohibit that red building from being built there again and something like that, with that type material on it. You could build the building.
Right.
But you wouldn't be able to put something like that maybe in that particular situation.
You'd still paint it red.
Probably paint red, any color wants it. It, that, I mean, that is nothing other than a pole barn.
Right.
Just wanted to make sure on something.
About now, yeah.
Under.
Hotel in the post office.
Materials can include, I'm trying to see the differences. I don't see any difference in the material makeup of the siding.
They get over there so I can follow along with you, forgive me.
It's the one sheet differences between the proposed and current.
I think it's on the table there, isn't it?
Is it on the table?
There was a sheet there.
Okay, I'll ball along with you.
But, but like stone, cultured stone, brick, veneer, glass, all these materials are the same on both the proposed and the existing ordinance?
Yes, sir.
The only change is no visible fasteners.
Visible fast, yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
But now you can't put a concrete building in, but you will be able to now. Is that?
It, so that was in the original ordinance, as far as the concrete block and the, and the vinyl siding.
You still, yeah.
It was in the original ordinance, it had to go through approval process, it just got followed, it just got changed over and it still has to go through approval process. So yes, theoretically, you could put a concrete block building in, but it would have to go to, through the approval process.
That's the way it is now.
That's the way it is now, yes.
Approval in the old one is the planning commission, but the approval now would be your office, engineer, and then with an appeal to the planning.
Or, or if we look at it and it's one that we look at and we go, well, you know, we, we really can't make a decision on it, we send it to planning commission without them having to appeal. It's, it's a second opinion, if you will, is the best way to describe it.
Any other questions?
Well, while we're throwing stuff out, I'm just completely hypothetical, but.
Sure.
If you guys deny it, and then they get denied by the planning commission.
Bingo. Back to the drawing board.
Where does it, where does it go from there? Then they've got to come up with something different?
Yes, sir.
Or is there, okay.
Yes, sir, that's a, that's, at that point, it's a, it's a new rendering, it's a new design.
Okay. Okay.
Lang?
I guess, listening to this, I'm, I'm really glad that there might be a chance to streamline some of this, because I know it's a long time waiting to get to a planning commission meeting sometimes as a developer myself. And you want to get on the agenda, it might be six weeks away, like you say, and it'd be nice to have some things that are easy to do. But the way I'm reading what Scott sent me is, right now, there's three materials that are absolutely not allowed, and those are vinyl siding, concrete blocks, and metal siding with visible fasteners. So those have been outlawed, if you will, for a reason, if I'm reading that right, that we don't allow those at all right now. And my example is, if you see a Walmart in downtown Memphis, they're going to build it cheap and dirty. If you go somewhere like in Florida or Scottsdale, Arizona, you'll see these beautiful Walmart buildings that look like palaces compared to what they might build in someplace that's not as demanding on building code. So I think those materials were banned for good reason, that they're not attractive, and we don't want concrete block buildings going up in here. And that's, that's how I'm reading this, that this would allow this to be done at the approval of Arnold's department. And I trust Arnold, I've known Arnold for a long, long, long time, but I'm like Nick, I mean, I like to make sure if someone changes hands or someone that's doing that, and that's the planning commission. And the, the appeal process, I'm thinking of it in the opposite way that you guys are thinking about it. I'm thinking about it, if I've got a beautiful building, like you're talking about, Hillary, and then something gets approved next door to it by this office and it's concrete block and I don't like it, I can't appeal, because I don't know that it was even done until I see it going up next door to me. So I, I think that's a flaw in, in the way this is set up about how it gets approved. And I like things going to the planning commission because there's more eyes looking at it. And I hope there's more chance of me hearing about it, if it's going to affect me. So that, that's my opinion about it. And on the fasteners part, I don't like where it would be an opinion. This is okay, this is not. If you could have it where it was a brand. If you could have it where it was a brand that you would approve and then you could tell people, but if you're going to opinion, that's when you start to get trouble. And if you approve yours, but I, I tell you no on yours, well, why? And that's what you always get because I've been through that on covenants out at Big Creek a lot. So it's a lot better if you don't rely on someone's opinion about what's, looks good. And that's why it was banned in the first place. And if there's some technical way you can say this is approved and this is not, it's a lot easier to point to than making an, an opinion.
Now, my question is, is though, from the engineering side, their opinion would be based on the products presented at the time. Because products will change across, across the years. I mean, you're going to have one product, maybe for the first 10 years it wasn't great, but then after 10 years from there, they've redeveloped it, they've got a, and so it's not just going to be just like a, an opinion like, oh, I don't like that style of fastener. It's going to have to be based on the quality, correct?
You might have an approved materials list.
Yeah. And add to it. So many approved, there's so many materials out there. I mean, you'd have a, you'd be hard pressed, you'd have a book bigger than Scott ever wants to carry around.
Changes every day.
And it changes, yeah. I mean, because you could have a good product. I mean, you know, Tupperware in the eighties was solid. Tupperware now.
Yeah.
They don't even sell them.
I, I don't have.
I think still have it, but I mean, you know.
Yeah, I remember you sold it to the hospital last month.
I don't have a good answer on that, Bob, but I just.
No, I mean, I'm just, I mean, I'm just, we're all hashing this at this point. So that's why I'm just trying to get some clarity as well.
But I think these three things been banned for good reason for a long time and to, to let them back in, uh, just think would be a mistake. I think we need to be the kind of city that demands a, a level of building material that looks the way we want Mountain Home to look like.
So as far as the engineering department, I mean, is it just two of y'all makes this decision?
Pretty much, yes.
And Clay works for you, right?
Right.
So basically if y'all disagree.
And.
It's going to be one person.
My philosophy on whenever the planning commission was starting down this road, um, and I was sitting up there when all this was, when the facade ordinance was put in, and we put it off to the planning commission and everything like that because a lot of my arguments was, well, it's, it's very much an opinion. What looks good and what doesn't? What looks good to Bob might not to Nick over here, you know, kind of deal. Uh, basically we're trying to streamline and quicken up the approval process for these, some of these builders. If there's, I look at it as pretty cut and dry, you know, here's our ordinance, you know, just like we did with the burger company. As exposed fasteners came up, sorry, that's written, we can't, we can't change that. You can go to the planning commission, get a variance and keep on going. But we can't change that. If somebody comes in and it's a cut and dry, um, say one of the developers building another fourplex, it's going to look just like the one next that he last built three months ago. You know, well, that's a pretty cut and dry type situation. All right, as of right now, they'd have to go in front of the planning commission again. Um, helping out those situations, if, if there is no question involved, here's our samples, here's our color renderings and everything else. That's the other reason we added that because we haven't been getting that kind of information a lot from the builders. Uh, then we just push it off to the, if there's any question as far as against the ordinance, then our department's idea is we'll push it off to the planning commission. But if they want to go strictly to the ordinance and everything, there'd be no reason that the planning commission could really deny it at that stage.
And on the commercial stuff, the, the commercial stuff that we see that comes to y'all, that's from national brand type stuff. You know, uh, things like the Saturn McDonald's or a Macalsters. We hardly ever have an issue with any of them.
Right.
It's the, it's the guy out here that's driving around town and all of a sudden decides to throw up a commercial building.
Yeah. Trying to do it on a shoestring budget.
You know, because of those, those, a bigger name brand, if you want to call it that, builders or, or at least the outlet that's going in there, the top plan ones they bring us in the beginning are very much more detailed and, you know, they got rendering.
They do their diligence on the front end and their plans are, you know, they, they look, yeah.
Three to four pages worth of renderings available.
Yeah.
You know, we're not getting that kind of information out of our local contractor.
Alright, so we've heard the first reading and, uh, uh, discussion about that. Let's go ahead, Roger, and move on to the next one.
Next ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Where City of Mountain Home benefits from orderly development of properties within the city meets regulation areas like parking lots, whereas city has addressed such needs through the adoption of a set of development regulations with ordinance 2021-13 adopted in April 15, 2021. Whereas time has come to update the city's parking lot landscape regulation to better address the needs of the city. Therefore, we are in a day section one, ordinance shop home passage become 2025 Mountain Home Parking Lot Landscape Regulations Ordinance, hereafter referred to as Parking Lot and Landscape Regulations. The Parking Lot and Landscape Regulations City of Mountain Home are adopted in its entirety by reference there too. Violation of the ordinance shall be deemed a misdemeanor punished for no less than $50 fine or more than $200 fine. Each day a violation persists shall be deemed a separate violation. Mountain Home Ordinance 9730 is repealed in its entirety upon adoption of this ordinance. Section five, in their interpretation application for this disordernece shall be held to be minimum regulations adopted for promotion of public health, safety and general welfare. Should there be any conflict or implication with this ordinance to any other existing ordinance or ordinance, the more stringent regulations shall apply.
Alright, again, this is very similar to the last one in that we're trying to take something out of going to the planning commission to, to get the roll shelves approved in front of a building that's currently required. Clay?
So this is act, as Mary has stated, this is very similar to the first one that we did on the facade. Uh, basically we took our landscape regulations, which is a 20-page document that is governed by the ordinance, uh, Mr. Morgan read out. And we changed the landscape regulations, which is I believe five pages inside of there. Uh, first change we've made is the, previously there was invasive species that were actually listed out on the ordinance. Uh, mimosa, bamboo, English ivy, to list a, a few. Uh, that was actually based off of the University of Arkansas Agricultural Division list that they have on their website. So to streamline things, we have actually took that list out and we've just put a, a new line on there that says list can be found at University of Arkansas Division of Agriculture website. So by doing that, that keeps us from having to update this ordinance or amend this ordinance every time they publish a new list if they ever do. Uh, that's first change. Second change we're proposing is on the second page, landscaping features to be incorporated into building side sides requiring facade. Uh, over the past couple of months, we've had several, uh, businesses come to the planning commission with variances for what was called the three foot rule around the front of the business. Uh, to kind of streamline that, we have changed that to where as long as a landscaping feature or features to be incorporated into the building side requiring the facade. Uh, they could put a planter box out in front of the building, they could put bums out there, whatever they wanted to do, and that would suffice and meet what the ordinance requirements are. Open that up a little bit versus saying three foot worth of landscaping around the entire front of the building. And third change is adding the same paragraph that we had in the facade ordinance, which is it can be approved by the, uh, building inspection department. If we, if it's cut and dry, we can approve it, doesn't have to go to planning commission. We appeal it, have questions, at that point it's going to planning commission.
Any questions?
Not exactly sure what the question is.
You've got one, you just can't give it out?
Yeah, well, it's. A business has to have, either with the new or the old, the difference in the size, but you have to have some kind of plants along the front.
Or green space.
Correct. Some kind of landscape feature.
Some kind of landscape feature. But plant-based.
Yes.
Okay.
Brett, Arnold.
Because I know with the, the parking lots and cutting the lots and moving the water that you've got to have so much green space and that kind of stuff. This is totally separate from that though.
Yeah, and where we're running the issues with this three foot landscape up against the building, normally there's sidewalks there and we're running the ADA issues and people just end up walking through the landscape. One ends up happening quite a bit. And, um, and, um, Aldi's is one of them.
Aldi's was.
Very good example.
They just said, no, we, we can't do that with our clientele and everything. We need that sidewalk up against the building. And the planning commission granted that variance.
And what some of them do, like Aldi's is a good example and part of their explanation, Bob, is they also use that three foot sidewalk or that area, the sidewalk, not only for ADA access, but that's what you pull up against in park.
Right.
You know, so they put landscaping in a lot of other places in their parking lot to make the building look good. It's just not up within that three foot of the building right there. And there's numerous places around town, Walgreens, you know, it's got a sidewalk around it right up against it, you know, and that, that works well as long as you've got some landscaping somewhere else in there.
Up against the building or just out?
Well, it, 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 within that site.
So anywhere within their property line, if they've got plants and bushes somewhere.
No, there's tree, there's, there's tree in those, in that ordinance, you got to be within 60 foot of the tree.
Right.
You got to have buffers on your edges. I mean, if, if you read the landscape ordinance, it's still pretty involved.
Right.
To make it look good. And that, and I must say like Aldi's that went above and beyond.
Yes.
On theirs, uh, they got a lot of trees going out along the, the Home Depot driveway and everything else like that. It's, it's still looks nice.
Anything else? Alright, that was the first reading of that. Scott will bring both these back in two weeks. Anything else? I have nothing else to know. So.
Motion to adjourn.
All favorit.